Okay, first of all, I apologize for the delay. It's unusual for us not to start on time. We, some of you may notice that we started with our test clicker and some peoples weren't registering on, on time. So what we're gonna do to make sure that that is fixed before we cast a vote is for the, at least the first vote, we're gonna switch to our old system of using paper ballots. So Kimberly has, Spizano has gone around the room and districts should have their paper ballots. For those people that are participating online, the tabulators will have to accept those votes coming in from online from your district. So this would be a good time if, if you're a tabulator to just quickly text your district or however you communicate with them so that they know that, at least initially, they should text in their vote to you. And then you can mark that on the card. So you'll have people that are participating in person, they will mark the card, and then you can supplement with what is on the text screen from your tabulators. Everybody understand? Okay, so tabulators will need to reach out to those members who are participating remotely, and they will text you their vote. And those participating in the room can just pass their card around in their district. Okay? And then we'll just collect them, we'll read the vote, and hopefully, in intervening time, we'll be able to make sure that everybody's clicker is working. We just don't wanna hold up the meeting waiting for that to happen, okay? Does everybody understand? Okay. So with that preamble, good evening and welcome to our September meeting. I hope you all had a lovely summer break. My name is Alexis Colgar, RTM moderator. As all members have received a copy of the call for tonight's meeting, the reading of the call shall be omitted. This evening, I've asked Craig Ammison, a member of District 12, to lead us in the pledge. Would everyone please rise and please join Mr. Ammison as he leads us in the pledge?
The United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. As all members have received a copy of the minutes from the June 2023 meeting, the reading of those minutes shall be omitted. There are three corrections to the minutes that I would like to make note of. The first is that Daniel Izzo, who's a member of District 6, was listed as absent. He should have been reflected in the present category. The second correction, thank you to Mr. Bill Lewis, who caught these two on page six, where it says, "Peterburg Chairman of the Land Use Committee made a motion to postpone item 10." It should have been items number 10 and 14, so we will add the 14 there. And then the third minor correction is on page 10, and it says, "The vote was now in the legislative enrolling motion," and it should read, "The vote was now in the legislative enrolling motion to amend item 2." Are there any additional proposed changes to the minutes from our June meeting? Hearing not an absent objection, the June minutes as amended stand adopted upon unanimous consent. I would now like to recognize Tom Byrne from District 6, please.
Good evening, Madam Moderator, fellow members and guests. The minutes of our September meeting from one year ago begin with the following passage: "The moderator recognized Erford E. Porter II, who introduced the delegates to the Boys' State Program, a week-long learn-by-doing program in civics and government. Erford E. Porter II is a longstanding co-chairman of the American Legion Post-29 Youth Programs." As we had done virtually every year for more than 20 years, we then proceeded a year ago to recognize the individual high school students who participated in the 2022 American Legion Program. While Erf Porter is not here in body with us tonight, but he is here in spirit. Erf died two weeks ago, and I would like to remark on the tremendous loss our community has suffered as a result. Before offering a resolution in honor of Erf, I want to point out two examples of the depth of Erf's dedication to giving back to the community, and in particular, to the youth of Greenwich. Erf was a longtime youth sports coach in all sports, and has been honored by both the Greenwich Old Timers and the Greenwich Youth Football League for his efforts. Perhaps the best example of the impact Erf had on the kids he coached and worked with in scouting came from one of those kids he had worked with, who happened to be given a talk, giving a talk to the Greenwich Retired Men's Association in August 2017. And the topic that day was the Pacific operations of the United States Navy in the South China Sea and around North Korea. The speaker was Greenwich native Admiral John Weigold, who at the time was the Reserve Deputy Commander of the United States Pacific Fleet. I'm sorry, the video of that speech was not on the RMA website, so I cannot quote directly. But I was sitting with Erf that day as Admiral Weigold began his talk. I recall Admiral Weigold looking out at the audience of over 200 people and saying that he first needed to publicly thank and acknowledge the person who had been most influential in his life as a boy growing up and playing sports in Greenwich, and setting him on the path that saw him on the verge of retiring as a rear admiral in the Navy. That person, of course, was Erf Porter, who had that same effect on countless young men and women. Shortly after I became moderator, Erf came to me and told me that for every year going forward, I was going to give a presentation to the delegation of young men and women who had been selected to go to the American Legion Boys' and Girls' State Program, just before they left for that one-week-long Model Congress-type program. So beginning in the year 2000, and virtually every year since then until the pandemic, Erf, Libby Floren, and I would meet with the high school students at the American Legion Hall in Glenville on a Sunday afternoon in mid-June during final exam week to talk about Robert's Rules and other fascinating topics. Erf expected a lot from the kids, but prepared them well for what lay ahead. Erf Porter was a remarkable selfless man. Madam Moderator, I would like to offer the following resolution on behalf of District 6 and 12. Whereas Erford E. Porter II, a member of this body for 14 years, died on September 6, 2023, at the age of 89; and whereas Erf Porter, who was the model of what a civic servant should be, served District 6 with distinction from 1990 through 1993, and then again from 2006 to 2015, when he transferred into District 12, which he also served with distinction. Erf served on the Finance Committee and the Budget Overview Committee, as well as several special committees during his tenure. And whereas Erf grew up in Roscoe, New York, playing baseball, football, and basketball, and becoming a lover of the outdoors, particularly a lover of fly fishing in the local streams there; and whereas Erf graduated from Alfred University with a degree in chemistry, served in the United States Army for two years in post-war Korea, and worked for Union Carbide for 28 years; and whereas Erf, his wife Jane, and his five children ultimately settled in Old Greenwich in 1974, where Erf immersed himself in community activities by coaching all manner of youth sports, and later serving in and being honored by the Greenwich Old Timers and the Greenwich Youth Football League, putting his musical skills to work in the service of the Sound Beach Community Volunteer Band, the Greenwich Choral Society, the St. Clement Church Choir, and the Melody Men, volunteering with the Greenwich Boy Scouts, serving as an integral member of American Legion Greenwich Post-29, and promoting active civic participation among our youth by keeping the wildly successful American Legion Boys' and Girls' State Program alive in Greenwich. Whereas Erf Porter served as a faithful friend and mentor to many on the RTM and around town, now therefore be it resolved that the entire membership of the Greenwich Representative Town Meeting joins District 6 and 12 in honoring Erford E. Porter's service to this body and his exemplary and productive life, in which he was a patriarch, a patriot, and a pillar of the community, and extends its sympathy to the Porter family, his wife Jane, his five children, and his 12 grandchildren. And be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting, and that a suitable copy be prepared and sent to Erf's wife Jane.
Thank you very much. I ask everyone to please rise if we observe a moment of silence for Erf Porter. I'd like to recognize Bob Baralek, the chairman of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, please.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Good evening, everybody. I am here with a special invitation for each and every one of you. No, it is not to a kegger or even to a cocktail party, which would be much more fun. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which I chair, is having a panel discussion on Thursday, next Thursday, September 28th, at 7:00 PM in the big conference room at Town Hall. The panelists will be Fred Camilla, Margarita Albin, one of the hardest-working volunteers I have ever met, and myself. And what we will be sharing with all of you, and I hope you can all attend, is everything to do with affordable housing in Greenwich, most particularly what your Affordable Housing Trust Fund has been trying to accomplish for you and for the town since we were starting. It would be wonderful if as many of you as possible could come and grill us with your hardest possible questions, engage us in conversation so that we can continue the dialogue of what this town should or should not do for affordable housing, one of the main purposes that, for which you voted to establish the trust several years ago. If you have any curiosity whatsoever about what we are trying to accomplish, either please come to that meeting or look at it on television. I think it's gonna be televised. Please come, all the cool kids will be there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Craig has indicated that we believe that the delay that was causing some of the clickers not to register has been remediated. So we're gonna try a test vote now, just to make sure that the clickers work. And if they do, then we can use the clickers, and we don't have to use the balloting, paper balloting, and the district tabulators. So let's just try it and see if it works, and if it doesn't, we'll go to Plan B, okay? So if everybody could just press the green button, if you could press your green button and see if it works. You're welcome to get up and look. And if you're online, if you just refresh your browser. Okay, just wait. Let's see if they come in. Are any of them coming in? Is anyone, it's alphabetical now. I'm sorry, what? Okay. Okay. Is yours? Okay. Rubin isn't working. Ammison isn't working. And, I'm sorry? Okay. All right, so we're just gonna, we tried it. It doesn't seem to be as quick as it should be. There seems to be a delay. We need to move forward. So we'll just work with our paper ballot and Plan B, okay? So everybody's back to paper ballot and the district tabulators. We tried. Okay? I'm sorry, who is? Yes. Yes. Donna, please come, please come to the front.
People at home, just want you to clarify how they are to vote.
Sure.
People here will do ballots.
Correct. I'll clarify that. Good point. So what we're gonna do is for everybody who's in the room, we're just gonna circulate a paper ballot like we normally used to. For those who are participating from home, you just need to text in to whoever your designated district tabulator is, and in, I think, almost every case, it is the secretary of the district. And so if, if, you should have that text chain still active, or your tabulator can just email you or text you, and then you'll send in yes, no, abstain for whatever item, and they will fill in the card here. Okay? Does everyone understand online? Yes.
There used to be a number of people could contact if they were having it.
Yes, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read that number. The technical support number is 203-992-8383, but I'm, I'm not so sure that that would be needed right now because that is historically what we use when we're voting via the clicker. Okay? So does everybody understand that? Okay. So let's, let's get on with the call for tonight's meeting. I notified the membership that I would recommend the following organization of our agenda based on the reports received. Consent calendar items: 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 11, 12, 13, 17, 18, and 19. Combined items: 20 and 21. Separate items: 10, 14, 15, 26, and 27. Items fif, I'm sorry, items 16, 23, 16, 22, 23, 24, 25, 28, and 29 have been withdrawn. Pursuant to our rules, I will designate items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 11, 12, 13, 17, 18, and 19 to our consent calendar, and if those items remain on our consent calendar, we will hear no committee reports, and all you are here, here is what I'm about to say. Item 1, the appointment of Scott Johnson to be a member of the Board of Parks and Recreation for a term expiring June 30th, 2026. Item 2, the appointment of Ann Alexander to be an alternate member of the Historic District Commission for a term expiring October 31st, 2023. Item 3, the appointment of Lynn Geralek to be an alternate member of the Historic District Commission for a term expiring October 31st, 2027. Item 4, the appointment of Philip Dodd to be a regular member of the Historic District Commission for a term expiring October 31st, 2025. Item 5, the appointment of Glenn Kaner to be a regular member of the Labor Contracts Committee for a term expiring December 31st, 2023. Item 6, the appointment of Aaron Leonard to be an alternate member of the Claims Committee for a term expiring December 31st, 2023. Item 7, the appointment of Gordon Hinchelwood to be an alternate member of the Inland Wetlands Water Courses Agency One Word for a term expiring October 31st, 2024. Item 8, the appointment of Ted Walworth to be a regular member of the Inland Wetlands Water Courses Agency One Word for a term expiring October 31st, 2026. Item 9, the appointment of Tom Zach to be a regular member of the Alarm Appeals Board for a term expiring June 30th, 2027. Item 11, the appointment of Robin Lember-Grief to be a regular member of the Board of Human Services for a term expiring June 30th, 2026. Item 12, the appointment of Peter Kelly to be a regular member of the Nathaniel Witherell Board for a term expiring June 30th, 2026. Item 13, the appointment of Pamela Packard to be a regular member of Nathaniel Witherell Board for a term expiring June 30th, 2025. Where am I going? Let's see. I don't, I think that's it. I think, yes, we're it. That's it. I didn't have anything beyond item 19. Are there any objections to the designation of those items on the cons, oh, wait a minute, I didn't read item 19, did I? I don't think I did. Nope. Okay. Oh, 17, 18, and 19. Good. All right. I'm all out of sorts. Okay. 17 is accepting the installation of the irrigation system for the Hamilton Avenue School Athletic Field. Item 18 is the RTM approving the lease with the Greenwich Arts Council, beginning October 2023 and ending on September 30th, 2033. And item 19 is an amendment to the design agreement between the Department of the Army and the Town of Greenwich for flood risk management project on the Byram River. And I think that is it. The item numbers again are, the consent calendar items are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 11, 12, 13, 17, 18, and 19. And I believe they have all been read into the record. Are there any, are there any objections to the designation of those items to the consent calendar? Okay. So we're not gonna use the electronic voting system. You can pass around your card, and if people could just text in at home to their tabulator, that would be great. And hopefully, we can complete it in, you know, our customary five-minute window, and then we'll announce the vote. How are the tabulators doing? We can move on with the meeting, but I wanna make sure that if you're actively recording votes, that you're not being distracted. Have most of the... But do you have, have you gotten in many of the cards already? Have the tabulators turned in their cards? Okay. All right. So I'll give you another minute before we, we continue on. I just wanna make sure that the tabulators aren't distracted while they're collecting votes and turning in their cards. Who are you waiting for? District...
Eight and nine.
Districts eight and nine? If you could get your cards in, that would be greatly appreciated. District eight, who's tabulating for you? So I think we're gonna continue on with the meeting. I apologize for the inconvenience, but I do appreciate your patience with this. Okay? So next up on our calendar are the combined calendar items. When we have the vote, I'll read it, but for right now, we'll just keep moving forward. The combined calendar items are 20 and 21. In order to combine items, we, we will need a motion to suspend the rules. Is there a motion to suspend the rules to combine for voting purposes items 20 and 21? It has been moved and seconded to combine for voting purposes item 20 and 21. The motion to suspend the rules is not debatable and does require a two-thirds majority to pass. We can adopt this by unanimous consent, or we could take a record vote. Is there anyone that objects to suspending the rules to combine for voting purposes items 20 and 21? Hearing not an absent objection, the motion to suspend the rules for combining items 20 and 21 has been adopted upon unanimous consent. May we have the resolution for item 20. Michael Kisleck of the Department of Public Works, please. Just 20 right now, yep.
Michael Kisleck, District 3, and also an engineer in the Department of Public Works. Number 20, be it resolved that the sum of $2 million be in the same is hereby appropriated to be added to the following account: B315-59600-24317, known as GHS Soil Remediation. Thank you.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution has been moved and seconded, and is now before us. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this item, please? We have Kimberly Blank, Brooks Harris, and Michael Spilo. You can go in any order you want.
Good evening. Your Education Committee met on Monday, September 11th, at Town Hall with several districts participating by phone. All 12 districts were represented for the discussion, but District 1 was absent during the voting. We took up items 20 and 21. Item 20 is a $2 million appropriation for soil remediation work by DPW at Greenwich High. Item 21 is a bonding resolution for this appropriation. We took up and voted on both items together. Amy Seabert, Commissioner of Public Works, presented these items to our committee. Ms. Seabert explained that DPW is requesting additional funds to complete the soil remediation work on the Greenwich High School fields. This work has been ongoing for over 10 years. This year's work was budgeted for $4 million. The interim appropriation is to cover overages in the volume of material and additional disposal costs based on the hazard level of these materials. She said that as they were working this summer, they found that they needed to remove more material than they anticipated. Some of the material they needed to remove contained more hazardous substances, substances like lead, that required disposal at more expensive landfills. These costs exceeded their budgeted contingencies, and she believes that the $2 million will be sufficient to finish the work. A member of the committee asked what would happen if we delayed this funding until the regular budget process. Ms. Seabert explained that it might be more expensive, as the crews would have to mothball their equipment and wait to start up again next year. With the interim appropriation, they can continue their work through the fall. She said she believes the remediation work on the field will finally be complete when they finish this work. We voted 11-0-0 with District 1 absent to approve both items.
Thank you very much. Brooks Harris, Chairman of the Finance Committee.
Finance also took up items 20 and 21 together. Much of what was previously reported is things that we discussed in our meeting. It was mentioned that on fields 2, 3, 4, and 5, $21.5 million had already been spent. In our meeting, they maintained that they didn't know what the final cost of remediation would be. It really depends on whether they find more, and so far in this process, that's often been the case. And also, what the final timing is depends on what they find when they get down there. But it's hoped that this will put a large dent in that process. We spent quite a bit of time talking about safety for the kids. We were concerned that the remediation would be done in a way where kids won't be exposed while the toxins are still there, and they explained to us the steps they took to ensure that kids aren't in an area where there may be toxins. And then, once they get the stuff remediated, obviously, that won't be an issue going forward. We also spent some time talking about the bond, the bond resolution, and we were comfortable that that was consistent with the BET stated bond policy. This will be a five-year maturity, amortizing over five years, consistent with the other financings that we've done over time. And we approved this 11-0-0 with one district absent. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Spilo, Chairman of the Public Works Committee.
We also took up items 20 and 21 concurrently. I'll try not to repeat. The, the field remediation found more... The field remediation found more contamination than was originally expected, so they had to remove additional soils. And when the soils were brought to the disposal site, they found additional contamination and had to be moved to a different disposal site. That increased the cost substantially. Let's see. A delay in approving funds would only postpone repayment, as we have already incurred the expense. And the bonding will happen as part of the normal course of bonding. The committee also voted 12-0-0 in favor of both items.
Thank you. Debate on item twenty, no speakers have signed up. Okay. Item twenty-one is now before us. Mr. Kisleck?
All right. Item twenty-one is a resolution authorizing the issuance of $2 million bonds of the town to meet a portion of the capital budget appropriation for the remediation of Greenwich High School fields for fiscal year 2023-2024, and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowing for such purpose.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution has been moved and seconded, and is now before us. Kip Bergweger, if you'd like to go. I believe the three chairs that have already spoken are not going to come back on this one. Is that correct? Okay. Mr. Bergweger, Chairman of our Legislative Rules Committee.
Hi, Chair and Moderator, members of the RTM and guests. Legislative Rules took up item twenty-one last Monday. We had two districts who were absent because of either appearing before other committees or being a little late on being able to kick through the phone, and a third district who was unable to make the meeting. We had Karen Fassoliotis of the BET to help us. She pointed out that a revised version of the bonding resolution had been submitted by the town comptroller, correcting certain wording errors, for example, changing BET to Board of Estimate and Taxation. That was all of our discussion. We voted on legal order and on the merits 9-0-0.
Great. Thank you very much. I do want to give you the vote on the consent calendar item before we take our vote on the combined calendar item. Two hundred in favor, one no, zero abstention. Those items have carried. Okay. Any debate on item twenty-one, the bonding resolution? No one had signed up. Yes, Mr. Quigley, you have a comment on the bonding resolution? Okay.
Good evening. Thank you all. Is that working?
Thank you all. Peter Quigley, member of District Three and returning from three terms with District Seven. And twelve fifteen years ago, we got into this remediation issue at the Mesa Project and the high school. I'm voting for this. You can't stop it. What am I doing here? I'm having a comment here because several of us, at the time of approving a $28 million project, asked if soil remediation had been completed on this project. We were all told it had been. It now is up to, I believe, although we couldn't get an answer in Finance Committee, to $40 million on top of the $28 million. And I've heard it could go to as much as $100 million for the total cost. We couldn't get an answer. But I'm coming up tonight to remind people that when you're doing these MIs on public projects, and particularly schools, we hope that soil testing is done as part of the site plan, because the soil testing's critical so that these costs don't come after this august body approves these projects. So I would only ask that when it gets in front of an MI, there's been discussion on it, that PZ asks for the appropriate soil testing, and soil testing by EPA standards, not by the state DEP. There are much more stringent standards for kids playing in our fields and for the public congregating at public sites where municipal improvements are needed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I would ask the district chairs, or whoever, the secretary who's ever monitoring your card, to please write combined calendar items twenty and twenty-one. You may pass your card around. And for those who are voting remotely, if you could just text your vote to your tabulator, your secretary, whoever's keeping that record for your district, we'll cycle that around. We'll give you a few minutes, and then we'll move on to our first of our separate calendar items. Okay, while we're waiting for the vote on the combined calendar to come in, we're going to move ahead with our separate calendar. Scott Kalb, I believe you have a motion that you wanted to offer?
Good evening, everybody, and good evening, Madam Moderator. I'd like to offer a motion to limit debate to five minutes for the main proponent and five minutes for the main opponent, and two minutes for all other speakers per item per motion.
The latter of the proponents probably, or the opponent, to be determined by the moderator, I'm assuming. Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Is there a second? The motion has been moved and seconded? This would be for the balance of the meeting. Okay? A motion to limit debate is not itself debatable and requires a two-thirds majority to pass. We can try doing it and see if it's unanimous. If it's not, we will move to a record vote and see how that goes. Is there anyone that opposes the motion to limit debate to two minutes per speaker, per motion, with five minutes for the principal proponent, and five minutes for the opponent, the latter to be determined by the moderator? Okay, we have an objection, so we will need to take a record vote on that. Okay? If you could just pull your delegation, please. If you are in favor of the two-minute time limit with five minutes for the proponent and the opponent, the latter to be determined by the moderator, so two minutes per speaker, per motion, per item, you would vote yes. If you are opposed, you would vote no. And if the tabulators could work with getting their members who are online to also vote, please. We'll wait until that comes in. We can't do a voice vote, Ms. Nissenovich, because we have people that are hybrid, and we can't account for them in the room. Okay? So what we could do, though, is begin with the presentation of the item, and then, when we get to the actual debates, we should have the vote on the motion of whether or not we've adopted those time limits. So if people could hustle along in their district, pass the card in, then hopefully, by the time we get to the debate, we will have the result of that. Okay? So, item number ten is the first of our separate items. Who's introducing that? Is there a board of select person here who's introducing that item?
So, good evening, everyone. Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a regular member of the Central Middle School Building Committee, Jan Rogers Niffen.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution has been moved and seconded, and is now before us. May we have the reports from the committees that considered this item, please? Beginning with Bob McKnight of the Appointments Committee.
Good evening. Mr. Niffen is currently a member of the RTM. He is a CEO of a consulting business that specializes in the retail sector. Prior, his career in the retail had him overseeing the building of hundreds of stores around the country. As a former chair of the Bruce Museum Board, he oversaw the planning and completion of the recent expansion. Jan's an Air Force veteran and a media analyst for retail and financial news. We nominated him by a vote of 9-0-1, with District Nine voting no.
Thank you. Who's giving the next report, education or Public Works? Education, Kimberly Blank, Chairwoman of our Education Committee.
Hi. Your Education Committee took up item ten, the appointment of Jan Rogers Niffen to the Central Middle School Building Committee. Mr. Niffen is a member of the RTM from District Eleven and a resident of Greenwich for over fifteen years. He's an Air Force veteran and has had a long career in the retail industry, is an executive at the May Company, and is head of his own research and consulting firm. As a retail industry executive, he oversaw the construction and opening of many department store buildings. He is a current member and former chairman of the Board of the Bruce Museum. In his role as chair, he oversaw the construction of the Bruce's recent $70 million expansion and renovation. He is a parent of a middle school student who is not currently enrolled in the Greenwich Public Schools, and he said that he's had experience with public schools in other towns as both a student and a parent. Members of the committee questioned Mr. Niffen extensively, and he patiently answered all questions. He said that he has been attending meetings of the Central Middle School Building Committee over the summer as an observer, so that he could get up to speed on the status of the project. He said that the committee has a beautiful design, but recognizes that there is a major gap between the current estimated cost to build that design and the funds the town has currently appropriated. When asked how to bridge that gap, Mr. Niffen said that he doesn't have a ready answer. He believes that there are some amounts that can always be value engineered, but doesn't believe that those kinds of changes will be sufficient. He said that he doesn't have a view on the specifications or size of the building. One member asked whether he was aware of how the current $67 million appropriation figure was arrived at, and he said that he was not. He said that he had worked with Turner Construction and has confidence that their estimates for the total project costs are largely correct. We voted 7-3-1 with District One absent to approve Mr. Niffen's appointment. Districts two, three, four, seven, nine, ten, and eleven voted in favor, and District Six, eight, and twelve voted no. District Five, which was being represented by a substitute, abstained. Those opposed cited his lack of experience with the Greenwich Public Schools and their wish that the Board of Selectmen had chosen someone with greater knowledge of our school system. They were concerned that he didn't seem to understand important historical aspects about the project, like how the funding level or sizing were chosen. They felt that he didn't seem to know what the educational specifications were and what they called for. They believe this lack of knowledge could lead to project delays. One member said they couldn't tell from his comments how committed he was to the current design. Those in favor of Mr. Niffen said that he seemed patient, thoughtful, balanced, objective, and well-considered in his answers to our questions. They said that he had a clear understanding of the role and that they appreciated his experience in overseeing building projects and the examples he gave of how costs can be saved through value engineering. They believe that he will be able to actively contribute to the committee quickly, as he has already observed meetings over the summer. They also appreciate the willingness of someone with his experience to volunteer their time to the building committee, which is a time-consuming and occasionally contentious job. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Spilo, Chairman of the Public Works Committee.
Good evening. Public Works took up the nomination of Mr. Niffen. Mr. Niffen was interviewed and answered questions about his background. Mr. Niffen has extensive background managing and building large commercial buildings for public companies. Mr. Niffen is a former chair of the Bruce Museum, where he oversaw the launch and implementation of the museum renovation project of $70 million. Mr. Niffen informed the committee that he has been attending Central Middle School meetings even before his nomination, and that he believes the current design is very nice. The committee was impressed with Mr. Niffen and his extensive relevant experience. We voted 10-1-1 for Mr. Niffen. The abstention was unable to hear the discussion over the phone, and the no vote was concerned about Mr. Niffen's political donations to the Connecticut Treasurer campaign and felt Mr. Niffen's experience was insufficient.
Thank you. We do have the vote from the combined calendar. Those in favor, 201; opposed, 1; abstaining, 0. Those items have carried. Ms. Pizano, do we have a tally for the limit on debate? So that we can... Or if we're just waiting for one district, what that is, so that, you know, if it's not close, we don't need to have... We can move on without it. How many? Right, if it's overwhelmingly... If you're waiting for a district of twenty, and you already have an overwhelming number, it's unlikely to change right now. Okay, we'll have an exact number for you in a moment, but this item to limit debate is overwhelmingly going to carry. So for the balance of our speakers, you'll have two minutes per motion, per item, per motion, with five minutes for the proponent and opponent, the latter to be determined by the moderator. When we have the total, I'll provide it to you. So debate on item number ten, we have... Our first speaker is Janet McMahon, who is being recognized as the principal. Jan Niffen will go last, so the candidate will speak last, not immediately after the principal. So Ms. McMahon, you have five minutes.
Thank you and good evening, Madam Moderator, members of the RTM and guests. My name is Janet McMahon, and I'm a member of District Eight and a delegate to the Education Committee. My views tonight are that of my own as a central middle school parent and as a taxpayer. Last Monday, Mr. Niffen was interviewed thoroughly by the Education Committee, and I thank him for the time he spent answering our myriad of questions. I can confirm that Mr. Niffen has impressive credentials in finance and has had an illustrious career on Wall Street relating to commercial real estate and retail analysis. I respect his spirit of volunteerism as a member of the RTM in District Eleven and his willingness to serve on the CMS Building Committee. That said, I am deeply concerned about some of the answers, or rather, non-answers, that he gave our committee that evening. First and foremost, Mr. Niffen was unable to answer some basic questions I'd asked him relating to the CMS educational specifications, despite having been nominated by the Board of Selectmen on June eighth and sitting in on weekly meetings from the beginning of July. According to the Charter, Article Nine, School Building Committee, Section 2-45, Powers and Duties, the Building Committee's primary task is, quote, "In supervising the construction of the project, the committee shall adhere strictly," emphasis added, "to the educational specifications and requirements prepared and filed by the Board of Education." When I asked him the reason the number of classrooms were needed according to the ed specs, he didn't have an answer. Another member asked whether he was familiar with both the team teaching model and the GPS middle school curriculum. Again, he was unable to answer. These are fundamental to the Central Middle School project, and I remain unconvinced that he can carry out the vested powers and duties required of a Building Committee member. The construction of Central Middle School is Greenwich's highest priority capital project at the moment, since it is now known that the structural supports that were shored up back in February 2022 are only good for five years. Simply put, the school must be constructed within three and a half years, or the students and teachers risk bodily harm by remaining in the building. That is the worst-case scenario. In the best-case scenario, which is the lesser of two evils, students will again have their education disrupted, as they will again have to be displaced to other schools. I asked Mr. Niffen if he was aware of this and how he would be able to help facilitate the speedy construction of CMS. Again, he was unable to answer. His inability to answer basic and important questions that the CMS community have top of mind is unsettling, to say the least. Additionally, it is important to note that Mr. Niffen is being nominated to the Building Committee during a critical juncture of the CMS construction timeline. At fourteen months into the project, this is no time to appoint someone who will be learning on the job. CMS parents and taxpayers need and deserve a Building Committee member who is up to speed on all aspects, has a clear sense of urgency in the project, is more engaged in the process, and has a deep knowledge of school projects. Because, as we all know, time is money, and the more time is spent in delaying the project, the more construction costs will escalate. It bears mentioning that neither the RTM It bears mentioning that neither the RTM nor the Building Committee is required to appoint Mr. Niffen at this time. A state statute dictates that each Building Committee shall consist of, quote, "not less than seven nor more than nine voting members," end quote. The CMS Building Committee is currently composed of eight voting members, and tie votes have been a rarity in the past 14 months. I urge members to vote no on item 10 so we can reopen the nomination process and appoint a candidate with more relevant experience and knowledge of the project. This project is simply too important, and my child and all children at Central Middle School deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim Blank, to be followed by Janet Stone McWiggen. Craig, could you set the timer for two minutes, please?
Hi. The following comments are my own opinion and not on behalf of the Education Committee. I just want to say a few words in support of Mr. Niffen's confirmation. I don't know him personally, and the only interaction we've had was at our Education Committee interview. At that interview, Mr. Niffen struck me as thoughtful, patient, and pragmatic. He did not express any views that made me think he isn't supportive of this project. He has as much or more experience with construction projects as most members we've confirmed to Building Committees in the past. We have a variety of talents and experiences on our Building Committees, and it's quite common that we have people on these committees who have relevant professional experience, even if they don't have personal experience with our public school system. I am always enormously appreciative of people who are willing to step forward to volunteer for school building committees. It is a time-intensive, unpaid, volunteer job where at times members find themselves in the midst of various public firestorms. When someone with relevant experience is willing to do this, I generally think we should say thank you and make the confirmation process as pleasant as possible. So I say thank you to Mr. Niffen and plan to vote for his appointment. Thank you.
Thank you. Janet Stone McWiggen, to be followed by Lauren Rabin.
Good evening. I'm Janet Stone McWiggen. I serve as a Greenwich Select President, and I stand before you to address one of the most important responsibilities of the Board of Selectmen and the representative town meeting. Greenwich is very fortunate to have so many community volunteers willing to serve on its town boards, commissions, and committees. These bodies oversee an impressive share of town governance. We should therefore aspire to appoint the most qualified and appropriate candidates to these bodies. The Board of Selectmen take this responsibility seriously. We consider the needs of the body in question and pay close attention to political balance. Our deliberations take place in special session allowable by FOIA, as understandably, I don't think we would get as many volunteers if their candidacies were debated publicly. It is rare for the Board of Selectmen to disagree on its nominations. But we disagreed on a number of nominations that come before you on tonight's call, this nomination being one of them. Out of respect for confidentiality, I will only share that I felt that there were other candidates that were better qualified and suited to the responsibilities of the board or committee in question. And I will say this, that the debate is not partisan. The candidates I would prefer do not come from my party. My comments should not be construed as a personal attack. I am not here to discredit or disparage anyone. I'm here simply to say, if you will agree with me that there are better candidates, ask us to roll up our sleeves again. Everyone serving the interests of this town needs to have the confidence of its appointing bodies. Thank you.
Thank you. Lauren Rabin, to be followed by Cheryl Moss. And after Cheryl Moss, the speakers are no longer going to be pro-con, pro-con. There are more people who signed up to speak against Mr. Niffen, so you're going to hear those in succession.
Good evening, everyone. And yes, this is very important. The Board of Selectmen and the RTM, we take our duties very seriously. Since April of 2020, the Board of Selectmen has interviewed 350 people for boards, commissions, and committees. And just for a little bit of background, not every one of those will come in front of the RTM for several reasons. Sometimes we are the appointing authority as the Board of Selectmen. Sometimes it's just the first selectman that's the appointing authority, and then sometimes we don't choose people. For Central Middle School, the first go-around, we had 19 applications for seven spots. One person couldn't do the job, thought it was a conflict of interest, went back to the drawing board, put another person on. That person had some social media issues, had to resign, and then we interviewed three people for this single spot. Janet and Fred will attest, I'm the note taker. I have reams of notebooks from every interview, all 350 that we've done, and I'm just going to give you some notes that I took when we interviewed Jan. He spent his life in retail. He's handled capital applications for new buildings and capital expenses. He is on the RTM, which you know. He's built and worked on the Bruce Museum, and he said, "What we build and what price is not red, blue, white, black, right or wrong. The issue is, what does the town need and what are we willing to pay for it?" He is professional. He has great experience with value engineering. He's aware of the escalation of costs, and some are coming down. He has experience with Turner Construction, which is the construction manager at risk for Central Middle School. He's willing to do things in the future. He has the time to dedicate. He's willing to see this through the end. He's been attending the meetings.
Time.
For full transparency, I'm on that building committee as well.
Let me just give you the... Before Ms. Moss speaks, the vote on the motion to limit debate. Those in favor, 180; opposed, 16; abstaining, no. The time limits have carried. Ms. Moss, to be followed by Stephen Meskers.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Moderator, members of the RTM and guests. I speak tonight against the proposed appointment of Jan Niffen to the Central Middle School Building Committee. As Chair of District 8 and a parent of a CMS graduate, I cannot stress strongly enough that the appointment of Mr. Niffen would not only slow the pace of getting the school approved, it would add yet another vote against following the ed specs that have bipartisan approval by the BOE. Mr. Niffen was unable to answer any of the questions he was asked on the ed specs. His avoidance in answering questions at his interview show either a complete lack of interest in doing his homework or an effort to hide his true feelings about the project. Additionally, he has financial connections to the Aurora's over $10,000 in donations to Nisha Aurora's husband. Together with Nisha Aurora being the most vocal obstacle to getting this project completed, this appointment is the final straw in what is clearly a politically motivated nomination. To pass over Steph Cowie, a highly qualified candidate who is already a non-voting member on the Building Committee and fully up to speed on a very complex project, in favor of someone who has no experience on a school building committee and who has shown a lack of interest in learning about the facts, stinks of cronyism. This is yet another person with no connection to our...
Point of order.
This is... I'll continue. This is yet another person with no connection to our public schools pushing their way onto a building committee to delay, or worse, kill the project. If he is approved, we will end up with even worse rancor and fighting on the committee, as well as a building that does not meet the educational needs of our children. This is the town I grew up in, and this politically motivated nomination does not reflect the values of what I remember, where people always put the best interests of our children above all else.
Ms. Nisinnovich?
I'm...
Okay. Okay. Ms. Moss, just continue and just refrain from...
We need...
Ms. Gladstone, that's unacceptable.
That would be an ad hominem attack as well.
Okay? So let's just focus. You have three seconds left. Let's just wrap it up, please.
Do I get to put the clock back for the comments?
No, we're just going to move forward at this point.
We need a qualified, experienced person on this committee. Jan Niffen is not that person. If you support getting Central Middle School built...
Time. Thank you.
Vote no.
Mr. Meskers, to be followed by First Selectman Fred Camillo. And I would just remind everybody to, you know, not make ad hominem attacks. Things like calling people dishonest or something like that would not be acceptable.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So I'm a representative for the 150th District in the House of Representatives in Hartford, and I am your RTM member from District 6. I rise in opposition to the nomination of the candidate for two simple reasons. One, we need to move the project forward. We have capable people who have been involved that will approve the process of the project in a quicker and more logical fashion. I'm worried that the delays will provide me with problems in seeking reimbursement from the state. I've been waiting for this project. I've been expecting to hear it come out of our BET and of the RTM. And we've just been dropped a decision on municipal improvements that, despite all previous precedent, we are no longer able to look for the appropriation. Without the appropriation, I can't argue to improve the reimbursement rate. This is another, yet another delay in this project. I am concerned that there's a concerted effort to delay the project. I'm not accusing Mr. Niffen of that, but I think when you look at where we are today, I don't understand how this nomination will move that process forward. And I am annoyed, as your state rep, I need an appropriation. I need to go up and argue about a reimbursement rate. I need... We need to build the school, and I think we have other candidates who could help us get there faster. And so I urge you to vote no.
Thank you. First Selectman Fred Camillo, to be followed by Kathy Steele.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, RTM members and guests. I stand in strong support of Jan Niffen tonight. As you've heard from another speaker, I too grew up here, so of course I'm going to know a lot of the people that we interview. And some of them, in these 19 that we interviewed, are good friends of mine. And so I always have to remember that we are discussing and voting on who we believe are the most qualified people with the skill sets to fit this position that they're seeking. Jan Niffen came highly recommended to us, and after meeting him, you realize what an amazing life story he had, what a successful career he's had in retail. He is a litigation consultant, as well as appearing as a regular on CNBC as a guest panelist, and he has served his nation. He has served our town. We reached out also. I know Lauren and I talked to a lot of people on the committee, on the Board of the Bruce, and every single person, Republican or Democrat, spoke very highly of him. This is a very qualified person who is willing to roll up his sleeves, and I respectfully urge you all to approve his nomination. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Steele, to be followed by Svetlana Wasserman. Is Kathy Steele... Okay.
Hello? Can you hear me now?
We can. Thank you.
Thank you. So there's been a lot of controversy surrounding Jan's nomination to the Central Middle School Building Committee. I serve in District 11 with Mr. Niffen. I can't say that I know him well, but he has a quirky sense of humor and a quick wit. D11 has a unique kind of cordiality, and Jan is very likable. Last week in District 11, when our Education and Appointments Committee reps shared their votes and discussions both for and against his nomination, he quipped that one person had voted against him because he had donated to Harry Aurora's campaign for state rep. There was some laughter about it, and others joked about how all the nominees would be disqualified if campaign donations would become a factor. At the time, it didn't seem like a reason to oppose his nomination, but then I realized it isn't just any donation, and it isn't just any nomination. Mr. Niffen donated thousands to Mr. Aurora. Mr. Aurora's wife, Nisha, is the BET member assigned to oversee the CMS budget, and Mrs. Aurora is the person who nominated Mr. Niffen for the committee. There's a connection here that is uncomfortable. When pushed comes to shove, as it undoubtedly will with CMS, will Mr. Niffen's relationship with the Aurora's influence his vote? Maybe, maybe not. But questions about impartiality and neutrality will exist, and accusations will be leveled. It gives both sides just one more reason to cry foul. The Central Middle School renovation is already very contentious and divisive. There are a lot of very sharp elbows. The Building Committee members squabble on social media and argue through the press. It's very polarized and has become very politicized. My objection to Mr. Niffen's nomination is not about him as a person, his politics, or his party. It's about the optics of this situation. I worry that this nomination will further escalate, or perhaps I should say devolve, the situation. Thank you for consideration.
Thank you. Svetlana Wasserman, to be followed by Jan Niffen. Is Ms. Wasserman here or online? Ms. Wasserman, if you're online, could you just raise your hand so Ms. Larkin can locate you? Okay. Well, we're going to unmute you and see if it's you.
Hi, it's me. Is that my being...
Okay.
Hi. Good evening, members of the RTM. I want to thank Mr. Niffen for offering his time and expertise to the service of the Central Middle School Building Committee.
I'm sorry. I think that's simply her...
I apologize. I'm using a borrowed link.
That is her ID. I can't do anything about that right now.
I can come off and redial on my own line. I'm apologizing.
Jenny Larkin will rename her. We don't create that. That's what she's put in.
Yeah, I apologize. I'm using a borrowed account.
So we'll wait for her to be re... Okay. Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Wasserman.
Good evening, members of the RTM. I want to thank Mr. Niffen for offering his time and expertise to the service of the Central Middle School Building Committee. I also think it's important that the RTM consider this appointment with eyes wide open. The process of getting Central Middle School funded has become a painful wound in this community. We have three and a half years left in the five-year lifespan of the temporary remediation of Central Middle School, and the decision of the town legal department to require a municipal improvement for this, but not for earlier projects, will add further delays. There's no secret to why the delays are happening. The Board of Education unanimously approved ed specs for the building, but some on the BET, most vocally Nisha Aurora and her husband, former state rep Harry Aurora, insist that the BOE rewrite the ed specs to build a smaller school. Campaign finance reports reveal that Mr. Niffen and his wife contributed over $10,000 to the Aurora's campaign. I want to just close by mentioning that there is someone who is not before us for nomination today. Stephanie Cowie is a disabilities rights advocate with Children and Greenwich Public Schools, who's already a non-voting member of the Building Committee and has attended every meeting with three-quarters of our schools, not ADA compliant, according to our school's facilities manager. Hers is an important voice to be represented. She applied for this position and was interviewed on May 18, but she's not before us today. Considering the delays that this building project has already experienced, I want to caution the RTM to think twice before appointing someone whose nomination may be an effort to rewrite the ed specs and further delay this project. There are other candidates up to speed and ready to do the job.
Thank you. Jan Niffen is our final speaker, and you'll have five minutes.
Hi. I'm Jan Rogers Niffen. I'm in my first term on the RTM from District 11, and I've filed to stand for election again this November. I'm here asking for your vote to approve my appointment to the Central Middle School Building Committee. I'd like to thank all those who volunteered to speak for me, whether or not they actually spoke tonight, because there were others that were willing to speak. And I would like to thank those on the three committees that voted overwhelmingly for me. All three committees, there were what? Five votes opposed, something like that. And a special thanks to all of those who are about to vote for me tonight. Thank you so much. I may wander off on my notes here, because sometimes I speak extemporaneously, but don't worry, because Alexis will give me the hook when I run out of time here. And I should add thanks to Alexis for the great job she does and all she does to keep this ship afloat and keep people like me under control when we're up here talking. A friend of mine, who has served on the RTM in the past, sent me the newspaper article and the email that was circulated opposing my appointment. He asked, "Why would someone with your track record, skill set, and talent for negotiation decide to subject themselves to this, just to sit on a school building committee?" I have to confess, I've had that discussion with my wife as well and myself. My answer, though, after thinking about it, was simple. If everyone decides this is just not worth the candle, there will be no light. So here I am, a poor kid born near the coal mines of Southern Illinois, who worked his way through grade school, high school, and college, and graduate school. I was the first person in my family to go to college. I got hitched in the Air Force out of it as an Air Force officer, and then I climbed the ladder at two of the 300 largest publicly traded companies in the country. All of them... All of that shows character and a willingness to work, but it doesn't necessarily make me qualified for the building committee. What does qualify me for the building committee is the work I did on the Bruce Museum, almost $70 million addition, that is truly a brand-new building that gently wraps around the wonderful historic building that has long housed the Bruce. It is an architectural marvel of form and function, and I was the board chair that took the vote to fund and build the new building, and I shepherded it through the first three years of planning. Longer, if you count all of the pre-planning that was involved, as a board member before I became the chair. Why was I comfortable taking on that task? Because I had set the standards, arranged the funding, sought board approval, and reported on the successes and the obstacles encountered on more than 50 structures costing from $20 million to more than $60 million over a 20-year period at one of the largest companies in the country. I am ready, willing, and able to do this job if you will give it to me. I'm a strong advocate for public school education. This building desperately needs replacement, and we need to find a way to get that job done. Thank you, and please cast a yes vote for me, Jan Rogers-Niffen.
Thank you very much. Thank you. So if you could proceed to pull your delegation, if you're in favor of Mr. Niffen, you would vote yes. If you're opposed, you would vote no. You can circulate your card, and if those online could just text in to whomever you're texting to. We'll have about five minutes, and then we'll move on to the next separate item. Kim, are we good with cards? Is everybody in? Are there any districts that are outstanding? We can move ahead. We don't need the vote to move ahead. I just want to make sure that most of the cards are in, so the tabulators aren't doing two things at once. Okay, we've got, it looks like everybody's coming in. Okay, so we're going to wait on the vote on item 10, and we're going to move forward with our separate calendar, which is item 14, the appointment of Brad Radulavaki to the Board of Nathaniel Witherell. Could we have one of the selectmen that's introducing this item, please?
Hello again. Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a regular member of the Nathaniel Witherell Board of Directors R7 for a term expiring June 30, 2026, Brad Radulavaki. I hope I pronounced that right.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution has been moved and seconded, and is now before us. May we have the reports from the committees that considered this item, please, beginning with Bob McKnight, Chairman of our Appointments Committee?
Good evening, once again. Brad is a member of the RTM's District 11, where he served on a Finance Committee Subcommittee for Nathaniel Witherell. Following working as an investment analyst, he presently is the owner of a 300-unit care network. He frankly discussed the analysis of the Witherell's finances during a term involving a nationwide nursing shortage and many unfulfilled vital positions at the facility. He was opposed by Nathaniel Witherell's Family Council, who provided statements and questions for the candidate, who refuted their claims. His focus is now on improving Nathaniel's operations. We nominated Brad by a vote of 740, with Districts 6, 8, 9, and 3 voting no.
Thank you. Allison Solar, Chair of the Health and Human Services Committee.
Hi, good evening. We also took up item 14, Radulavaki, his nomination to the Nathaniel Witherell Board. Mr. Radulavaki explained that he's been a resident of Greenwich for 20 years and serves on the Finance Committee of the RTM, as Bob mentioned. In 2012, he became an investor, manager, and owner of urgent care centers. He stated that his background in finance and healthcare services would be useful as urgent care center management is very similar to long-term care facilities. He addressed the email that had been circulating, which states that he had already made up his mind regarding the future of Nathaniel Witherell, and he explained that is not true. He shared that he did a lot of research on the financials for Nathaniel Witherell when he worked with Brooks Harris to prepare the Finance Committee's educational presentation regarding Nathaniel Witherell for the RTM last January, and that he understands the financial problems there. A committee member asked if he was more interested in not, in for-profit facilities as his urgent care centers are, and he said no. A committee member asked what brought him into healthcare, and he said that he was at Oak Hill Capital Management before that, and the funding of his initiatives ended, so he explored other options and believed that healthcare was a viable and worthy path. A committee member stated that the January presentation on Nathaniel Witherell to the RTM felt very biased and asked how open-minded he is to discuss all the options for the future of Nathaniel Witherell. He said the point of being on the board is to assure quality care and not about deciding the future of Nathaniel Witherell. A committee member asked what he thinks of a town-owned Nathaniel Witherell, and he stated that he thought there is a middle ground, running it with good financial management, improve the operations, and then the town can decide if it wants to cover any cost annually or not. Sheila Smith from the Nathaniel Witherell Family Council stated that the Family Council has collected 500 signatures against the appointment of Mr. Radulavaki and also Dr. Goldstein, because they believe they both have already decided that Nathaniel Witherell should be sold to a third-party operator. She also stated that the Nathaniel Witherell Family Council felt the process for nominations had been behind closed doors instead of including key stakeholders of Nathaniel Witherell. Our vote was 5, 3, 1, with Districts 1, 2, 4, 5, and 12 voting yes, Districts 6, 8, and 9 voting no, mainly concerns about his views for the future of Nathaniel Witherell to privatize. Another thought, he should understand that the board's job will be to vote on the future of Nathaniel Witherell. District 11 abstained, and Districts 3, 7, and 10 were abstained.
Thank you very much. That concludes our committee reports, and we're now going to open it up to debate. I would just remind all of our speakers to refrain from any ad hominem attacks. Our first speaker is going to be Elizabeth Quigley, representing the Family Council. She will have five minutes. The candidate will be speaking last on behalf of himself. It's not a balanced list. There are more people speaking opposed to the candidate than in favor, so you will not hear pro-con, pro-con necessarily straight through. Ms. Quigley, you have five minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Moderator. Thank you, RTM. I am speaking in opposition to the nomination of Mr. Radulavaki for the Board of Nathaniel Witherell. As a voter for over 40 years, I understand that one best learns any candidate's position on a given issue by what they have done, or written, or said, or how they have voted in the past. Because candidates for any position want your vote, they will tell you what you want to hear to secure it. In January, Mr. Radulavaki gave a report on Witherell as a member of the RTM Finance Working Group. In the presentation, in my opinion, the presentation is highly skewed toward privatization. The page "Why Maintain the Status Quo" provides five bullet points and an additional point challenging those five points. The next page is entitled "Risks with the Status Quo" and makes six points with assumptions and false premises. More on that in a moment. On the next two pages, we see "Why Privatize the Nathaniel Witherell" with lots of underlines, sub-bullets, and more bold print. The next page, "Risks of Privatization," cites only four points. Back to the assumptions, I chose one, the phrase "structurally impaired municipal ownership." But then pages later, it notes that the Nathaniel Witherell has enjoyed high occupancy relative to nursing home peers. However, it fails to provide the reason. The reason is found in the Financial Review section, "Union Employees." It is the fact, it is the fact that Witherell, as a town department, provides union wages for workers who are elsewhere paid far less. This union labor provides the stability a long-term care facility needs to maintain a high level of care for its residents. The false premise I mentioned is that the millions of dollars each year could go to other things. But why should it go to other things? How is it that our town's growing sick or elderly population, who cannot remain at home, is not worth the $1 to $2 million a year of funding, or even more? Don't these most vulnerable deserve to be cared for, near to their families and friends? We spend $182 million for schools, and many of us don't even have children, or they've already grown up, but we want our neighbors' children's to have that opportunity?
Ms. Quigley, I just want to remind you, we're speaking about Mr. Radulavaki.
Yes.
Okay, so you need to confine your remarks to his or her candidacy, okay?
Okay, so the idea was that it's towards privatization, his views towards privatization. I feel that it's skewed, and that we should be willing to apply these funds that he, in his report, thinks should go to other things, really should be spent on our most vulnerable. So the presentation by Mr. Radulavaki, despite his efforts to make it sound like it's presenting options, is clearly biased, in my opinion, towards privatization. So my experience as a voter tells me that all these nice things we have been hearing from him are carefully crafted spin to get our vote. The Board of Nathaniel Witherell needs open-minded people ready to work with the new chairman, Mr. Markowitz, who has already begun to facilitate real and positive change. Our residents, current and future, deserve this. I therefore stand by the statement made by the Family Council that Mr. Radulavaki has made his mind to privatize the Witherell and would not be an open-minded and collaborative board member. Please vote no on item 14. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I do have the vote on the appointment of Jan Niffen. Those in favor, 121; opposed, 78; abstaining, four. That item has carried. Okay. Brooks Harris to be followed by Janet Stone-McWigan. And they'll each have two minutes on the clock if you could put them.
Hello. It's sad to see candidates judged by their party affiliation rather than by their actions, their commitments, and their deeds, and that is something we should not do. If you care about the residents at the Nathaniel Witherell or the viability of the facility, we need people with a passion and expertise to deliver it. Brad is the perfect combination of care and experience to make the Nathaniel Witherell the jewel we all expect. We're incredibly fortunate as a town to have people of this caliber volunteering to help. We should not take that for granted. It's not easy to run a facility like the Nathaniel Witherell. The business of critical care is complex and constantly changing. Understanding the management, hiring, procurement, scheduling, food service, and every other vital input takes years of experience and actual practice to get things right. Brad has experience with urgent care facilities and has firsthand knowledge of many issues that could arise at the Nathaniel Witherell, and we need that expertise. No one is happy that the rating has fallen from five stars to two stars, and while we may accept losses due to providing great care, it's unacceptable to lose money just because we forgot to bill the government for services we provided. Good intentions will not fix these problems unless combined with expertise. Some people complain Brad has made up his mind about privatization, as evidenced by the report given by the Finance Committee earlier this year. But that report only highlights the challenges and makes no specific recommendations. Every effort was made for balance. The Finance Committee approved it unanimously, including a yes vote from Finance Member and State Representative Hector Arzainia. If anything, that is a solid endorsement of Brad and showing that he is not biased. Finally, Brad is a good person. He's honest and earnest and wants to do what's right. When he says he's open to alternatives, he means it. There's a viable path forward that ensures quality and financial stability. Brad has the expertise to help find it and implement it. Please support him for the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Janet Stone-McWigan to be followed by Brian Gillett.
And Madam Moderator, I'm going to pass. I would just be repeating my statements that I made before.
Okay, thank you. Brian Gillett to be followed by Amy Bedini.
Good evening. My name is Brian Gillett, and I am a Greenwich resident. I reside around the corner at Greenwich High School. I am here to voice my strong support for the nomination of Brad Radulavaki to the Board of Nathaniel Witherell. Speaking specifically about his qualifications, and most importantly, his character, he's a highly respected member of the community, and everybody that knows Brad knows he's honest and extremely honorable. I've known Brad for 10 years. He has the expertise and commitment to healthcare that you've heard that we need in a board member for this facility, as well as a sound judgment and truly open mind that's in the best interest of the nursing home. He has many years of professional experience, as you've all heard, and he's spent considerable time understanding the issues that face Witherell. Beyond his professional record, I also want to highlight his substantial overall commitment to healthcare and his philanthropic life. You can Google his initiatives at Northwestern University, but a couple of highlights is one is funding health-related research scholarships for up to 10 undergrads, supporting Global Health Visiting Scholars Program. And third is a role as a cultural ambassador for the study of health systems abroad in Serbia and Bosnia. This commitment to helping students in healthcare initiatives around the globe demonstrates his deep interest in healthcare. So to conclude, Brad is the honest, equitable, and principled individual that I hold to the highest regard. I think Greenwich would be absolutely lucky to have him serve on the board, and I urge you all here tonight to vote yes for his appointment. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Bedini to be followed by Anush Patel.
I'm going to also say that my co-chair, Elizabeth, said pretty much all the points, and I would encourage you to think hard about what she was saying about body of work versus what people say. So please vote no on item 14. Thank you.
Thank you. Anush Patel to be followed by Emily Trotman. Okay, I think they're online, and they're gonna...
My name is Anush Patel, and I'm speaking in favor of Brad Radulavaki's nomination to the Board of Nathaniel Witherell. As a longtime Greenwich resident and former RTM member, I am concerned about the struggles that Witherell has endured since the facility was renovated with $25 million investment by the town more than 10 years ago. My concerns have increased over the past two years as the rating of the facility dropped to two stars. And this is why I think it's become imperative that the town put in place a more engaged and knowledgeable team to run and oversee this facility. I think it's clear that Brad has the experience and knowledge required for a board seat. But more importantly, he has the willingness to volunteer his time to be part of the effort to get Witherell back to a sound financial position and to improve the quality of care for our residents. This will be no easy task, and we should be grateful that Greenwich residents like Brad are interested in getting involved in oversight of the Witherell. I've known Brad for many years, and I believe he has a sound judgment, open-mindedness, and collegial nature to be effective as a board member at the Witherell. Please vote yes for his nomination. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily Trotman to be followed by Paul Omsdod.
Good evening, Madam Moderator, members of the RTM, and guests here tonight. My name is Emily Trotman, and I've been a resident of Greenwich for 20 years. I am presently at the Columbia School of Social Work, where I study social work and how to care for people such as our elderly residents who are disabled and aging. I am also a proud mother of two who have gone through the public school system in Greenwich. I am the daughter of a 93-year-old woman who is a resident at Nathaniel Witherell, and she's been living there for one year. I am the secretary of the Family Council, and I ask that you vote no to the nomination of Brad Radulavaki tonight. I hope you all have had a chance to read the letter composed by the Family Council outlining our objections. Letter was endorsed by 493 people and is on file at the town clerk's office. Witherell is a vibrant, warm place, and in the past year, my mother and I have been welcomed there with open arms, and I believe the rating is up to a three now. The Family Council is deeply concerned that these two candidates, this particular candidate I'm speaking about tonight, has been put forth based on an agenda to privatize Nathaniel Witherell to a third-party operator. We feel like this would be a colossal mistake. We feel that Greenwich can and should retain Witherell because we take care of all of our residents, the young and the old. We have a responsibility to care for our teachers, our firemen, our administrators, and those who help run this town, and maybe even some members here tonight who need care in the coming years. We would like to ask that the process be reopened so that it is a democratic process, and the other qualified candidates can be considered. It has not been mentioned that there are other qualified candidates who are looking to serve. These two candidates have, this candidate has openly expressed the bias to... These two candidates have, this candidate has openly expressed the bias, to, in my opinion, to privatize Witherell. So I'd ask you to vote no tonight for Mr. Radulovaki.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Olmsted to be followed by Stephen Meskers.
Good evening. I'm here to support Brad and his nomination to the Board of Nathaniel Witherell. I think it's important to keep in mind that the problems at Nathaniel Witherell are longstanding. Going back to Project Renew, which was going to modify things so that we could cut, that they would be able to attract more revenue. And it hasn't helped. And we talk about how wonderful the care is, and the care was rated at one star, has recovered to two and maybe three. Is three-star care what we want to have? Is that our standard? I don't think so. And Brad has really demonstrated commitment to this process. He's been to all the board meetings the last two years. He's up to speed, and I think he'd do a great job. And I think you should be, you should support him in that effort. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Stephen Meskers to be followed by Lauren Raven.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I don't have a lot to say about the nomination of Brad Radulovaki. I had the pleasure of sitting for the presentation in January from the Finance Committee. My background on Wall Street is 35 years, billions of dollars of bonds sold. I've seen, I don't know how many presentations in my life. I can tell you that in looking at the presentation, presentation was skewed, and the balance of the skew was in favor of privatization as a solution. I think if we're looking at this and we're looking to get an honest and balanced opinion to make the decision in the next year to two years, I think we need to bring in people who are open-minded to that. And I'm sorry, based on that presentation and my comments, and I'll be honest with you, I made those comments in January, and the reaction was a little bit harsh to my observation that the presentation seemed skewed. I think you have to be open, you have to listen, you have to be willing to take those shots when you're standing in front of a group. And I'm not sure that this is the right candidate, and I urge you to vote no.
Thank you. Lauren Raven to be followed by Sheila Smith.
Hi again. Bringing my notebook, so I'll try to only say things that people haven't said. Brad did look into Nathaniel Witherell for his own mom. He has been attending the meetings for over 18 months. He understood a lot about the finances, a negative operating model in a brutal industry that's competitive and highly regulated, and that we need to be responsive to the market. He talked about patient care. He talked about ideas. We know that we had some billing issues, so back then in March, before I think all of that came out to bear, he was talking about ways of maybe outsourcing some of the financial functions as a way to bring the operating model more in line. And he said there's very professional ways to monitor the business. And we asked all 10 candidates for the four people that we are putting forward tonight if they would be objective. None of them came across with an opinion one way or the other. They were all open-minded, and I'd like to remind you that he would be one of nine people that are considering any options for Nathaniel Witherell. Nathaniel Witherell is a great place. My mom is actually a resident. She's very happy there, so I would not be putting someone forward who would put my mother in jeopardy. And somebody left their glasses.
Thank you. Sheila Smith to be followed by First Selectman Camilo.
Thank you. It's nice to hear somebody say that Witherell is a great place. I'm Sheila Smith. I've lived in Greenwich since 1984. I'm Vice Chair of the Family Council. I've raised two children in this town, of whom attended Central Middle School. And they vote now, by the way. Sorry, thank you. There's been a lot of talk about the decline in Witherell lately, but not a lot of talk about really what the possibilities are in the future. Witherell, remember, was five stars until a few years ago, and we had a new administration in Town Hall that put an enormous amount of pressure on Witherell to cut the budget. And there were several key nursing and CNA positions that were cut, and that was the first decline in ratings. So make no bones about it, it didn't just happen coincidentally. Five stars up until a few years ago. Then COVID hit, and that had a horrible impact, not just on Witherell, but the entire nursing home industry. So three stars went to what we have today. That doesn't mean that it's not going to return to five stars, and I'm fairly confident that it will if the town decides to continue to support it as a solid facility, not one with minimum wages and transient workforces. So that's my discussion on that. I'm just going to say one thing about Mr. Radulovaki, and I hope I'm pronouncing your name correctly. He seems like a very nice person, but he's a franchise investor in an urgent care facility in Stanford. He's not a manager, an operator, he's an investor. Many of you, I'm sure, are investors in publicly-owned companies, healthcare companies. This is not the same as being an operator. It's like saying a McDonald's franchisee would be an expert on gourmet food. There's quite a difference. I'm sure he's got a great skill set, but I don't personally think it's the one that we need on the Witherell Board. There are vacancies on the Witherell Board in key areas: nursing, not-for-profit healthcare, and family members and user experience. We already have two members who have a lot of experience in finance and not just in urgent care where it's one and done, but we're talking long-term care. So I urge you to oppose this.
Thank you. First Selectman Camilo to be followed by Nimeen Cortez.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I stand in strong support of Brad Radulovaki. About six months ago, when my friend Brad Markowitz agreed to take over the Board, he asked us if we would leave it alone for six months, this issue of the long-term endeavor of what to do with the facility and how we can turn it around. And we've honored that. Brad said there were a lot of minor things that needed to be done. There was a lot more than he thought needed to be done. This is what happens with these types of facilities. As Lauren said, it could be a brutal business, but Nathaniel Witherell is something that means a lot to many of us here. So we put these four people up, we gave them the six months, and here we are with six months in. And I think Brad's making great progress. But Brad Radulovaki, when we interviewed him, he had a really successful career, but the last 10 years, he shifted over to healthcare and urgent care with a special focus on affordability and accessibility to healthcare. He also has worked, had extensive participation in three global initiatives at his alma mater, Northwestern, all philanthropic in nature. He cares deeply about this. As somebody who has had many, many relatives in Nathaniel Witherell, my grandmother took brass breaths there, I volunteered there over the years, I find it a little offensive that some people will continuously come up and make comments about people who want to help and want to roll up their sleeves and who have the exact skill sets that we need to turn this around, that they're somehow motivated by greed. It's insulting, and I hope that people see through that. Brad is probably one of the most qualified people that we've ever interviewed for a specific position. So I respectfully ask that you all approve his nomination tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Nimeen Cortez. Ms. Larkin, is there anyone but... Okay, we'll just, we'll circle back if that person arrives. Christine Edwards to be followed by our final speaker, Brad Radulovaki.
Good evening, Madam Moderator and colleagues. I'm one of the people who've spent, is that okay? Spent a few months at Nathaniel Witherell. I have a history with that. My husband was, for five years, a social worker there. I remember when all the food was cooked on premise, when you talk about a fabulous facility instead of just bringing things in. I remember when people have been there for 30 years, and some still have. And if you look at quality of care, the most important thing you can do is to pay people a good salary, that they stay, and look at the fact that we did not have good judgment in terms of collecting money. And when you hear that $4 million was not collected for the funds...
Ms. Edwards, this is about Mr. Radulovaki.
But I'm coming to that.
Okay, come to it faster.
Because this is all part of it. Because what we need is somebody who sees what this whole venue has been. Having been there for a few months, I like the fact that somebody is going to look to keep this, that they see our town facility for not only our townspeople, but people who may be related and such. I'd rather not have a situation where I have to send a relative up to Torrington because we have a privatization going on at Nathaniel Witherell. I support all the things that have been said by Family Council, and I would really wish that you would take a very good concern that if there is any possibility that this is already a prejudge, which it sounds like it from the various things such as Steve Meskers' comments, that we vote no on this and find somebody who is much more balanced and open-minded. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Brad Radulovaki, and he'll have five minutes.
RTM members and guests, my name is Brad Radulovaki, and I appreciate this opportunity to speak about my nomination for a position on the Nathaniel Witherell Board. I am here because about two years ago, I expressed an interest in joining the Witherell Board. I volunteered. No one recruited me. And I volunteered because I have 10 years of experience as a hands-on manager and operator in the urgent care field, certainly not simply as a hands-off investor, where patient-first approach makes us an integral part of serving the healthcare needs for many communities. I'm very interested in helping the Witherell provide the best care for its residents and to improve the current difficult situation that the nursing home finds itself in. My involvement in healthcare and urgent care is the second career I chose after 25 successful years on Wall Street. And why urgent care specifically? It's because I wanted a substantial, meaningful, and impactful venture that I would be inspired to take part in. Urgent care is basically affordable, accessible, primary care, something that everyone needs on a regular basis and a service that improves healthcare outcomes. Urgent care is also an important healthcare resource for municipalities. In Stanford, for example, we won the city contract for workers' compensation services, and now the police force, fire department, and schoolteachers all come to our center for top-notch care. And during the COVID epidemic, urgent care was a key part of the testing solution for thousands of patients. The success we have enjoyed has been directly related to excellent patient care, and that is exactly my perspective on how a healthcare service must operate. I think it's also important to highlight my significant commitment to healthcare beyond my professional life. As you heard from Fred and Brian Gillett, I sponsored three philanthropic global health initiatives at Northwestern University, my alma mater. Most of the students that participate in the programs I support go on to careers in the healthcare field as physicians, policymakers, and administrators, and contribute toward improving health outcomes in our country. That's something I am thrilled to see and very, very proud to support. As you have also heard tonight, some people oppose my nomination because they fear I may be set on seeking a private manager for the Witherell. But I can assure you that I have not made up my mind on any potential restructuring options that the town may consider. If we can achieve the goals to improve care for residents along with more efficient and effective operations through self-management, I am prepared to support that path. I've spent two years educating myself about the Witherell while also attending board meetings. I know the issues facing the nursing home. At this time, the Witherell is in urgent need of the best management, board oversight, and staffing. In both my professional and philanthropic endeavors, I've demonstrated a commitment to improving healthcare outcomes, and I will extend that same level of commitment and effort in service of the Witherell. My experience can help ensure that we will improve the level of service and avoid many of the current financial pitfalls. I'm excited to give back to the town, and I assure you that my desire to help is sincere and open-minded. I hope you will support me in my goal to improve the Witherell. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our speaker list for item 14. So if the district chairs could circulate your card, if you're in favor of Mr. Radulovaki's nomination, you would vote yes. If you were opposed, you would vote no. And if those participating online could just text in to their person that they're connecting with, that would be great. We'll give you about five minutes, and then we'll move on. Okay, we're going to move along. The five-minute window's up, but it does look like most of the tabulators are bringing in their cards, and when we have that vote, I will announce it. Item 15 is now before us, the appointment of Michael Goldstein to the Board of Nathaniel Witherell. Could I have a member of the Board of Selectmen introduce the resolution, please?
Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a regular member of the Nathaniel Witherell Board of Directors are eight for a term expiring June 30, 2026, Michael Goldstein.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution has been moved and seconded. It is now before us. May we have the reports from the committees that considered this item, please, beginning with Bob McKnight, Chairman of our Appointments Committee?
Your Appointments Committee met Dr. Goldstein on September 12. He's an ophthalmologist and an attorney. His CV outlines many years of service on medical boards in New York, including the Medical Society of the State of New York's Governmental Affairs Committee. He addressed questions from Nathaniel Witherell's Family Council and refuted their claims. We nominated him by a vote of 8 to 1, with District 6 and 12 voting against, and 6 and 9 voting against, and District 12 abstaining.
Thank you. Allison Solar, Chairwoman of our Health and Human Services Committee.
Hello again. We took up item 15, Dr. Monica Goldstein nominated to the Nathaniel Witherell Board. Dr. Goldstein is an ophthalmologist and has lived in Greenwich since 1987. He stated he has extensive hospital management experience as an attorney and has chaired medical boards. He said that Nathaniel Witherell is a broken system and that billing issues showed extreme incompetence. He stated that Nathaniel Witherell serves a valuable service to the community and that they need to figure out how to make the place run efficiently, with the patients being the most important aspect of the operations. Committee members asked if he had an opinion as to the future of Nathaniel Witherell, and he said no. He explained that if we can make Nathaniel Witherell work for a certain amount, the town will decide if they want to pay that. Committee members asked if, for example, if it costs the town $3 million a year, does he believe it would be worth the service? And he said that would be up to the town. A committee member asked about his being anti-vaccination. He stated that he is not anti-vax, but anti-mandatory vaccinations. The committee member pushed and said even in a nursing home, he said he learned it was only mandatory for staff and not the patients. Sheila Smith and Amy Bedini from the Nathaniel Witherell Family Council stated their opposition to Dr. Goldstein for the same reasons as they opposed Mr. Brad Radulovaki, and they have, that they have an agenda and are not open to discussing all the options for a future of Nathaniel Witherell. Our vote was 1, 6, 2. So Districts, where is it? Districts, District 2 voted yes, Districts 4, 5, 6, 8, 9, and 11 voted no. Concerns about his views of Nathaniel Witherell overall, one mentioned negativity about Nathaniel Witherell and his views about the future. And Districts 3, 7, and 10 were absent. Oh, and I missed... Oh, and I missed-- there wasn't-- 2 abstained. Where is it? Districts 1 and 12 abstained.
Thanks. Thank you. Okay, we're now going to move to our speaker list. It's, again, not a balanced list, so it is what it is. Our first speaker will be Amy Bedini, representing the family council, and then after the conclusion of all the speakers, Mr. Goldstein will speak at the end. So Amy Bedini, representing the Nathaniel Witherall Family Council.
Kind of short, make sure that works. Thank you, Madam Moderator and RTM members. First, I'd like to say thank you for all your service. Often, volunteer jobs are thankless. I'm also learning a lot about politics that are not good, not fun. My name's Amy Bedini. I've lived in Old Greenwich for over 30 years. All three of my children attended public schools. I'm a lifelong volunteer. My mother lives at the Witherall. She's 79 years old. She has end-stage dementia. She's nonverbal, non-mobile, and needs every single need met. She has been incredibly well cared for over the past seven years. She never had a bed sore, aspiration pneumonia, and she has her same CNAs since she's been there. They're angels. I'm also a chair of the family council. The Nursing Home Reform Act of 1987 established family councils in all nursing homes. One reason for creating family councils is to protect families from retaliation. Our loved ones rely entirely on the staff for every single one of their needs. When a problem arises, it's difficult for the residents and families to resolve the conflict while being keenly aware of the vulnerable position their loved one is in. After the family council submitted our letter opposing nomination of Mr. Goldstein, I quickly-- Mr. Goldstein quickly replied with direct disparaging remarks about me personally. This antagonistic reply clearly shows his lack of understanding of family councils, something he should have researched before accepting the nomination, since the family council at the Witherall is a pretty integral part. We entrust the care of our loved ones and their lives to the employees and ultimately Board of Directors. The way Mr. Goldstein conducted himself over the past couple of days, you've all received those emails, to us is not the way we want a Board of Directors to behave. His opposition to COVID vaccine mandates gives us great concern regarding his opinions on many other medical decisions that may arise in the future. The essence of the governing body of the Nathaniel Witherall is to ensure our loved ones are protected. You must not put someone on the board who has demonstrated that he may not have the temperament to collaborate with families who may have differing opinions. Board Chairman Brad Markowitz, in just over six months, has already begun the process of uniting the board, working on the strategic plan, giving the family council a seat at the table. We believe the controversy surrounding Mr. Goldstein's nomination would be disruptive to the progress the board has been making. Family councils are not political. Someone said we oppose because of a political party. We exist to support other families and advocate for our loved ones. This is not a left-right issue. This is a human issue. We, the family council, are not anti-Republican and know that there were other qualified Republican candidates who are still willing and able to do the work. In fact, while I'm personally unaffiliated, I have voted Republican in both local and federal elections. But to me, the Republican Party in Greenwich has gone so far right that I can't blindly just support them on every single issue. It-- that's-- that's-- I'm sorry. I just learned that word ad hominem. Okay, I'm almost done. It's sad to me, having lived here so long, that folks are putting party over people. We need to get back to voting on issues, issues that affect our loved ones, issues that affect everyone. I hope that for this, you can put people over party and vote no on item 14. Thank you.
Okay. Beth McGilvery to be followed by Janet Stone McWiggin. Oh, and while we're waiting for Ms. McGilvery to get there, the vote, I have the vote on item 14, Mr. Radley Avaki. Those in favor, 122; opposed, 75; abstaining, 2 that item has carried.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Good evening, esteemed representatives. I am up here to support Michael Goldstein for the Nathaniel Witherall Board. I urge you to vote for him to serve our community with a-- because he has a proven track record in the health insurance business, in the health services business, and he would bring dedication and expertise to the Nathaniel Witherall Board. His resume and qualifications are truly outstanding in health services. We need to fill these seats, which have been available for an extensive period. In a nine-member board, he can provide one perspective critical to the nursing home facing significant challenges and provide thoughtful input with his years of-- years and years of experiences, experience providing hand-on healthcare services to patients. It's no secret Nathaniel Witherall Board has struggled in recent times. A lack of oversight and the failure to employ an accounts receivable specialist to collect money and handle financial matters has led to considerable losses. We must acknowledge the consequences of this negligence and look to turn the situation around. We need qualified individuals now who are experienced, dedicated to getting Nathaniel Witherall back on track with a focus on improving its dismal two-star rating. Let's make Nathaniel Witherall the gem it used to be and start filling all these empty board seats with highly competent members that can make a big impact in a short amount of time, like one of his recommendations is increasing the services and expanding the patient base with outpatient rehabilitation or adult-day nursing. Individuals have expressed their willingness to give back to our community and play pivotal roles in addressing various challenges. That's Michael Goldstein. By supporting him, we demonstrate our--
Janet Stone McWiggin to be followed by Hillary Hirosh.
But at any rate, thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm going to pass. I'm simply going to repeat my earlier statement.
Hillary Hirosh to be followed by Stephen Meskers.
Hillary Hirosh, D10. My good friend's mother is at Nathaniel Witherall, and she sits in a wet diaper a good portion of the day, and her teeth have been rotting because they haven't been cared for. Now, that staff tries really hard, but they are so overwhelmed. It's been a disaster, a two-star under our town's watch with our most vulnerable elderly residents. And so here comes Michael Goldstein, 43 years as a doctor, advocating for his patients, who has devoted his life to caring for others on a multitude of impressive medical boards, a long history of public service, 30-plus-year resident of Greenwich, and also a lawyer. So a resume that qualifies him for this position. In addition, his mother-in-law is at NW. And he bravely raises his hand and says, "I want to help with this mess." And I hope you read the all RTM communications. He's been defending himself from false rumors. And if you need-- if you read his responses, you would know, he stated multiple times, actually for years now, high-risk nursing home residents should be vaccinated. Now, this board position is a very difficult job, and yet he really wants to do it. His words are just about two of his goal, quoting, "I believe that my role on the board of NW would first and foremost be focused on improving the level of care." A second goal, also his words, "billing is a lifeblood and must be done by people who are experienced in medical billing with follow-up action for denied claims. They failed to bill $12.3 million." Now, that's a lot of money to make a mistake that way. Now, is this a person whose sole purpose in doing this is as an undercover pawn for a privatization conspiracy like the petition is claiming? Doesn't feel like it to me. We need to fix this now for my friend's mother, for all these poor residents, and for the staff. I spoke to Michael, and he is 100% walking into this job with the noble intention of fixing it, not handing it over to a private company. I don't care about political sides.
Thank you. Time. Please vote for this qualified-- Stephen Meskers to be followed by Lauren Raven.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. As we look forward to this vote, I just urge you to vote no. It's a simple procedure. The social policies, the social posts on social media regarding vaccines, regarding religious exemptions from vaccines, regarding mask-wearing, brings tremendous concern to me. If we are looking at our most vulnerable residents, we need to have people not only who uphold the letter of the law, but people who can enforce and encourage the spirit of the law. I do not think this is the appropriate candidate for a job to support our nursing homes. Regardless of whether we privatize it or not, I'm concerned about everything I've seen on the social media front. And these are our most vulnerable residents. I urge you to vote no.
Thank you. Lauren Raven to be followed by Sheila Smith.
All right. So I had to bring two books because we actually interviewed Michael Goldstein August 12, 2021, when we had openings on the Nathaniel Witherall Board. Some of the notes that I took is that he had a lot of ideas to try to bring in new revenue streams. I think somebody mentioned it, a day center to increase revenue, and he was interested in preserving it versus disbanding it. We always ask all the candidates if they haven't attended a board meeting or met with some of the board members, you know, would they go and do that? Because we knew that the RTM would ask them those questions. So he did talk to Larry Simon at the time. This was during COVID, so of course vaccination was a key component in not moving forward. But he has a lot of experience with geriatric patients. He has patients as old as 105. He said that Nathaniel Witherall was essential government service, improving the lives of our older adults. And he also had ideas about how to age at home, more access to earlier elective surgeries so that they can cut rehab time. Fast forward to interviewing him in March. What-- I'm just going to say what anyone else didn't say, is that he had no fixed agenda and he will be objective. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheila Smith to be followed by First Selectman Camillo.
Sorry, I should know with a last name that starts with S not to sit in the back of the room. I'm going to keep this very simple. Sheila Smith, Vice Chair of the Family Council at Nathaniel Witherall. And regardless of who sits on the board, the family council will be there, and they'll be working with us. So I'd like to reiterate what Amy Bedini said, that I don't think that Dr. Goldstein has the temperament really to work with family members. I'm going to keep this really simple, though. I'm not too interested about somebody's personal opinion about whether or not they should be vaccinated. This really comes down to what the law was. And a couple of years ago, there was a federal and state mandate that healthcare workers, nursing homes and hospitals in particular, had to be vaccinated. Dr. Goldstein, rather than get vaccinated, gave up his operating privileges at a New York hospital and actually was passed over at that time for a slot on the board at Nathaniel Witherall because he wouldn't get vaccinated. So why are we back here today, right? This is somebody who wouldn't have withheld the law. He'd rather-- what would he do? Step aside? This is wrong. There's so many candidates who are qualified in this town, Republicans, Democrats, independent. Why do we need to choose somebody who's a 2-1-0 in the selectman's office? Why can't we find somebody that we can all agree on who's really qualified and good? Forty residents died of COVID at Witherall. 266 have been infected with it, including two this past week. So let's find a doctor. If we need a doctor to be on the board, let's find one who believes in the science and upholds the law. Thank you very much.
Fred Camillo to be followed by Carol Lindstrom.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. As you heard, about two years ago, Dr. Goldstein came before us. And as you heard, even then, Board Chairman Larry Simon was supportive of his nomination here. When we were told that he was not vaccinated, Dr. Goldstein told us that-- he said it was a medical issue that he wanted to take into consideration. That's why he did not. He graciously stepped aside. It wasn't something that we told him he graciously stepped aside then. We did tell him that if something changed with that condition or we got beyond the pandemic, we certainly would be willing to interview him again. That's exactly what happened. As you've heard, doctor, lawyer, I'm not going to get into all that. You've heard all that before. But in the past few days, I had a lot of people calling for his nomination and some against. And I want to thank Amy Bedini. She had called me tonight and had mentioned her concern, and I thought she was very sincere about it, about the vaccination and that Dr. Goldstein had mentioned that he, you know, was against mandate-- mandatory vaccinations. That's not what he had told us a few years ago when I thought about it later in the day. And so I spoke to a few other people, and I did call Dr. Goldstein. And he not only confirmed that he was only for mandatory for other things, not for facilities like this. And he actually pointed me to, I think it was a Hartford Current article, which I think you all saw too, where many months ago, he actually stated that position. So I know he cares very, very deeply about this. He told us he doesn't know, at the end of the day, if he would be in favor of it being still as a town department or going to a third party. But he-- even if it went to a state as a town department, he agrees with most of us that this has to change. The way we go about it has to change for all of our residents. Thank you.
Carol Lindstrom to be followed by Barbara Derula. Is Carol Lindstrom either on the phone or in the room? Okay, if she comes back online, we'll find her. Barbara Derula? Barbara Derula's online.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Derula. I'm a member of the Nathaniel Witherall Family Council. I also have a family member on the third floor of Nathaniel for about two years now. I'm also a District 9 RTM representative for many years, and I am speaking to oppose the nomination of Michael Goldstein to the Nathaniel Witherall Board. Undoubtedly, this new board will be the one to make a very critical decision regarding the future of Nathaniel Witherall, whether it remains a town service or will be privatized. I believe Michael Goldstein is uniquely unsuited to be a board member at Nathaniel Witherall based on part-- in part on statements he has made publicly regarding Nathaniel Witherall's future. He could not be neutral as a board member, given he shows a strong bias towards privatization. We need to seek board members at Nathaniel that are unbiased, open-minded, and will exercise good judgment about the future of Nathaniel Witherall. We need board members that strive to gain a full understanding of the issues, experience in trends that impact our Nathaniel residents, and are rooted in a passion for the basic mission of Nathaniel Witherall. We should remember that Nathaniel Witherall was gifted to the town as a place to take care of the aging. It was never intended to be a money-making facility. I struggle to understand why the Board of Selectmen has nominated Mr. Goldstein as a candidate, one that has already expressed publicly their opinion about whether or not to privatize. I would like the Board of Selectmen to nominate a candidate who is regularly present at Nathaniel, familiar with the day-to-day experience of the residents and the rehab patients, looking out for their best interests and their well-being.
And our final speaker is Michael Goldstein. I'm sorry? No, you're not. You can-- you're welcome to come up and look at the list. You're not on the list. You have to-- you have to have signed up for something. You have not signed up to speak. You have signed-- you've put your name in a form. It's an empty form. Please look at it carefully. Mr. Goldstein, if you would like to speak, you're welcome to. He'll have five minutes. You'll have five minutes.
Thank you very much. Certainly, this has been an adventure for me. I certainly entered this process with a specific purpose to help a distressed nursing home, which had served my mother during a period of time when she had been there for rehabilitation. And I kind of find it really strange that things that have been misrepresented or untrue regarding things that I actually believe in and what I've actually said. And I'd like to clarify that. So for example, on December 13th, 2022, I've submitted a written argument in favor against the privatization of Nathaniel Witherall and in favor of actually keeping it as a town-owned facility. And yet I'm being accused of making public statements to the contrary. And the record is absolutely there. And I think that people need to know the truth before they make a decision. The second issue is the issue of vaccination. Yes, it is true that I am in general opposed to vaccine mandates, but there's also misinformation. I do have a medical condition, which I applied and was temporarily granted a medical waiver from one of the hospital systems that I was affiliated with. But in the end, it was not approved and I had to make a medical decision, whether I listened to my doctors or I listened to a board of people who do not have my best interest in mind. And I chose to opt in the best interest of my health too. In many ways, that this was a harmful thing to me. And yet I did it because I believed that it was the right thing. With regard to the nursing home problems, I did write a letter. I actually did write an article on January 19th, 2022, with a letter to the editor to the Hartford Current in which I specifically stated that I was in favor of vaccine mandates for nursing home residents and their employees. In general, I don't favor them. But in this case of the nursing homes at that particular time, forty percent of all the deaths from COVID in the state of Connecticut were happening in nursing homes. And I thought that those were sufficiently extraordinary circumstances that vaccination should be done. And it's important to understand an important thing. What people believe and what they do are not necessarily the same thing. I am a strong believer in the rule of law. I'm a strong believer that we need to comply with the law. And if I were to serve on a board, I would wholeheartedly recommend that we would in fact comply with the law. And if there's mandates, then that's the way it would be. And whatever my personal feelings, those are irrelevant. And, you know, I've spent forty-three years treating patients. My practice in ophthalmology has a large percentage of elderly patients. So I'm personally familiar with treating elderly patients. And to me, the idea that I'm insensitive to treating elderly patients is beyond belief. It's absolutely not true. I see, the problem with Witherall is I see it as a very, very troubled institution, which is both financially and care-wise has deteriorated. And the question is, how do you fix it? And the real fundamental economic problem is that it has a large percentage of patients that are treated at lower than the cost that it takes to care for them. And the money to cover that needs to come from somewhere. And the ideal scenario is that you have enough patients that are fully insured, are fully paying to make up the difference. And so far, we don't have that. So we need to attract more people that are paying. And you can't do that in a two-star facility. So you absolutely need to upgrade the facility. The second point is if you don't have enough money coming in from the nursing home patients and there are other services that you can provide and other services that can benefit the community, then you should provide them. And I believe that outpatient ambulance rehab is definitely one of them. And one of the growing areas is the area of day nursing home care. There are many people that don't necessarily want to put their family, loved one in a nursing home, but they'd like somebody to take care of them during the day, at least some of the time and maybe all of the time. And I think this is a huge potential area where we can actually expand Witherall. And at the same time, we could also generate additional revenue to cover the losses that we're having based on the fact that we're being grossly under-reimbursed by Medicaid. And certainly, Mr. Messkers, if he really wants to do something for nursing homes, he should understand that we lose $60,000 per year on every Medicaid patient. Let him as a legislator go and help us fight for higher reimbursement so that we can actually do a better job, rather than criticize me or anybody else. And I think that it's really disturbing to think that people have these horrible opinions of me when they're not even based on fact and they're not even true. And in fact, I entered this with the purpose of helping fix a problem. I entered it with the purpose of making sure that people in the nursing home got the best care. And yet, I seem to be the target of many attacks. And I just want you to know that I did this from the bottom of my heart to help. I've helped in many--
Thank you, Time. Thank you very much. Okay. If you were in favor of Mr. Goldstein, you would vote yes. If you were opposed, you would vote no. If you could circulate your cards and then have your tabulators call in, have your remote participants call into your tabulators, that would be great. We'll give you about five minutes to get that vote going. Okay, we're going to wait. We'll help the cards come in, but we're just going to keep moving along. Okay? Item number 26 is now before us. It's a proposed change to the Code of Ordinances for historic property at One Carey Road. Andrew Malillo is going to be introducing that resolution for us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And to everyone here, as Assistant or Secretary to the Historic District Commission, I'm presenting item 26. Resolve that Article 7 of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Greenwich entitled Historic Properties be amended pursuant to section 7-147P through 7-147Y of the General Statutes as follows. Property owned by Historic Properties of Greenwich, the following property known as One Carey Road, Riverside, Connecticut, is hereby designated as a historic property pursuant to the provisions of the General Statutes through sections previously mentioned, 7-147P through 7-147Y. And the rest is a property description. And that is pretty much it for what is being presented.
That's okay. Nope, you're going to stand down for a minute. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution has been moved and seconded and is now before us. May we have the reports from the committees that considered this item? Yes? I'm sorry, what? What is your point of order?
I just wanted to make the motion to suspend rules.
Okay, that's not when we do it now. You will be recognized to do that, but it's certainly not at this moment. Okay? So if we could have the committee reports for this item? Mr. Peter Berg, our Land Use Committee report.
Good evening. This is going to be really brief. We had Elise Green with us to present the item. This is a, you know, we have in the town a number of historic districts, such as Strickland Road in Cos Cob. But we also now have a number of historic properties, which are a single house on a property where the owners have designated it to be protected. No changes could be made to these houses without the permission, without approval from our Historic District Commission. And of course, we appoint the members of the Historic District Commission. So the very first of these historic properties was on the bottom of Teconic. And it was the property of Elise Green's mother, which is considered a very valuable preservation. So Elise Green has now, through this organization called the Historic Properties of Greenwich, acquired One Carey Road for the sole purpose of designating it as a historic property. And their plan is to put it on the market as soon as that happens. This is not, they don't expect to make a profit on it. They just want to protect the property. So our vote on this item was 10-0-0. And I take it that the reason that this was not a combined item is because, is this a first read or something?
It's a first read of an ordinance, but at the appropriate time, if someone wants to suspend the rules, we can potentially vote on it this evening for a final disposition.
So our vote was 10-0-0.
Okay, thank you. I do have the vote on item 15, the appointment of Michael Goldstein to the Board of Nathaniel Witherall. Those in favor, 85. Opposed, 105. Abstaining, 3. That motion has failed. Chip Bergweger, Chairman of our Legislative Rules Committee.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The Legislative Rules Committee met last Monday to consider this item 26. Members of the committee noted the extensive history and background information that was provided in the explantos for this item and felt most comfortable with approving the historic designation. So we also noted two Scrivener corrections that needed to be made. And we moved to, we adopted a motion to make those changes. And I'll make that motion at the appropriate time. Our vote on the legal order and the merits was 9-0-2. And the District 2 absented. And the motion is to change, add in the first line of the first paragraph, insert the words "Chapter 6" before the words "Article 7", and in the first line in the second paragraph, insert the section number 6-324.
Thank you. Would you like to, Mr. Bergweger, would you like to offer those Scrivener corrections now? I believe that there's only one person who has signed up to speak on this. So we can adopt this before we go to our speaker list.
Okay, well, as I just said, insert the words "Chapter 6" before the words "Article 7" in the first line of the first paragraph. And the first line in the second paragraph, insert the section number 6-324. Or whatever is correct if it turns out that some of these other items that are ordinance amendments don't get adopted somehow.
Okay. Those Scrivener error corrections being offered on behalf of a committee do not require a second. We can take those up by unanimous consent. Is there anyone that opposes the corrections, the Scrivener corrections that Legislative Rules is proposing? Hearing none and absent objection, those Scrivener errors can be adopted upon unanimous consent. Debate on item 26. I believe, Mr. Malillo, you are the only person who has signed up to speak on this item. But let me just check. Yes, you are. Would you like to address the body now?
So I'm going to turn into a pumpkin so I won't take up too much of your time. But this is a very straightforward proposal of a 260-year-old plus 60-year-old house, the oldest in Riverside. And to put the historic designation on it would allow it to be in perpetuity preserved and saved and keep that unique aspect of Riverside that has long since been demolished, destroyed, and built over preserved. Historic Properties of Greenwich has done a great job to allow this structure with ancient bones in town to remain in place where it's always been and to serve as a landmark, to allow this unique property to continue. But also, it sets a precedent for other property owners to consider doing the same thing with theirs. It doesn't negate future development or renovations or things like that. But what it allows is preserving an ancient landmark that is very quickly disappearing throughout town, let alone Riverside. So you can see in your supplemental documentation, the various letters, the very thorough report by Ann Young from the Historic Properties of Greenwich. It was brought before the Historic District Commission. They reviewed it, did their own study, P&amp;Z, had no comments. I think it's a great opportunity to save a house that's always been there for time immemorial and hopefully for centuries to come.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, this would be the time if anyone wants to offer a motion to suspend the rules so that we could take this up on its first read. Is there such a motion? I see a very eager person over there. Okay. 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 Okay, and who are you? Okay. So is there a second to that motion? Okay. So we can, the motion to suspend the rules is not debatable and does require a two-thirds majority to pass. So we can try seeing if it's by unanimous consent. If it's not by unanimous consent, we'll have to take a record vote. Because we have this hybrid situation, we can't do a voice vote. Okay? Effectively, what that means is if you pass this resolution to suspend the rules, you'll be allowed to take a dispositive vote on this item. If not, it will just come back to us next month automatically per our second read requirement. Okay, everybody ready? Is there anyone that opposes, is there anyone that opposes suspending the rules so that we can take this up as a first read? Hearing none and absent objection, that motion is carried upon unanimous consent. Okay? Yes, Mr. Spilo? Well, we give them time. We can give them 30 seconds if you want to text in. Okay? So if you want to-- Okay, that would be the customary way. I'm assuming that somebody would be frantically texting. Well, I believe I said it already carried and he offered a point of information. Okay? I think you are. But, okay. So you're welcome to vote against it, though, Mr. Orfus, you know, the item as it is. Okay? So what we now have before us is item 26, which is this change to the Code of Ordinances to make One Carey Road a historic district property. We can take it up as a first vote. So if your tabulator or chair can please mark your voting card. Item 26, if you are in favor of adopting this change to the ordinance, you would vote yes. If you are opposed, you would vote no. We'll give you five minutes and then you can circle back and we'll tell you what the vote is. And then we'll continue on with the meeting. We have one more item after this. Okay, we're going to wait for that vote to get announced. But in the meantime, we're going to continue on with our final item of the evening, which is item 27, another new proposed ordinance for a fair rent commission. May I have the resolution for that item, please? Patty Roberts, Chair of the Department of Human Services Board.
Good evening. Item 27 is about the ordinance to form a fair rent commission in our town, as it appears on the call.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution has been moved and seconded and is now before us. May we have the reports from the committees that considered this item, please? Beginning with, looks like Allison Solar from the Health and Human Services Committee.
All right, sorry about that. Hello again. We took up item 27, the Fair Rent Commission ordinance. Patty Roberts, Chair of the Working Committee that studied and developed this ordinance, presented the item. She also serves as the Chair of the Board of Human Services, as mentioned. Ms. Roberts explained that as of October 1, 2022, the state of Connecticut made it mandatory for all municipalities with populations over 25,000 to have a fair rent commission.
Hang on for a second, Ms. Solar. Mr. Spilo, could you mind keeping your personal conversation either outside? But I can hear you up here, which means she can hear you. So, okay? Thank you. Please continue, Ms. Solar.
Thanks. Currently, only four municipalities have not done so, including Greenwich. And two of those are about to vote on their ordinances in the next week. The concept of the Fair Rent Commission is that it's a place for tenants to be heard if they believe their rent increase is unfair. And the Fair Rent Commission is to hear both sides of the tenant and the landlord and make a determination. Ms. Roberts stated that there are 13 criteria for the Fair Rent Commission to use to determine an outcome, for example, MLS listings, town assessor lists, reasons for landlords to increase rents if their costs have increased, et cetera. She also stated that the tenant and landlord still have a right to go to small claims court if they do not like the decision of the-- small claims court if they do not like the decision of the Fair Rent Commission. Health and Human Services Committee member David Snyder, who also was a member of the Working Committee, stated that he contacted five different towns in Connecticut to ask how their fair rent commissions were operating. And they all stated that 99% of the time, the issue was resolved in mediation before the Fair Rent Commission has to even meet. Ms. Roberts stated that the mediator in our case would be our Commissioner of the Department of Human Services. She also explained that 34% of the town households are renters, which might be surprising to some. Ms. Roberts stated that there has been significant resistance from landlords regarding this ordinance. She explained that she had one landlord on the Working Committee, which is great, but it was difficult to recruit others. She said that when she presented this to LNR, there was opposition, and that LNR will be making a motion to refer this back to their committee. I later found out that they're referring it back to all the committees who considered this, two members of each committee. And I believe there would also be a second read on this item. One committee member noted that the FAQs on this topic were super helpful, because they also help explain what this ordinance is not. For example, this does not establish any rent control. So we voted on, you know, the merits of this, knowing that LNR would be referring it and making changes. And our vote was 8-0-1, with Districts 3, 7, and 10 absent, and District 5 abstained.
Thank you very much. Who's going next? Mr. Berg, are you going next with the Land Use Committee report? Peter Berg, Chairman of the Land Use Committee.
Evening again. So we also had Patty Roberts with us. Basically, we heard the same thing that you just heard from Allison Solar. We also heard that a whopping 34% of Greenwich households are tenants, not homeowners, which I think supports the idea of the value of having a fair rent commission. Our vote on the item was 10 in favor, 1 opposed. The 1 opposed, I think, I believe was District 2, who didn't think that this was consistent with our form of government. So again, 10-1-0.
Thank you. I do have the result of the vote on item 26, which was the Carey Road Historic District Designation. Those in favor, 171. Opposed, 2. Abstaining, 8. That item has carried. Mr. Burgweger with our Legislative and Rules report for item 27.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Legislative Rules was helped by Patty Roberts, Board Chair of Human Services, David Snyder, Board of Human Services, and Laura McGee, Assistant Town Attorney. The people who are helping us work to craft the ordinance in response to the state statute that requires towns in Greenwich with population of 25,000 or more to adopt this kind of ordinance, to create a fair rent commission. And as mentioned earlier, this is supposed to be done by July 1 of this year. There was also prepared a model ordinance, which other towns could, various towns in Connecticut could base their ordinance on the model. But our people took a very careful look at the model and developed a more appropriate ordinance for Greenwich. Our committee members complimented the team and their hard work and diligence in completing this draft ordinance. While our members recognize that a fair rent commission needs to be established, and it would be better for the town to make its own ordinance rather than having the state intervene, they still expressed dismay at the implications of the ordinance as written. One member noted that the unintended consequences of the commission, as defined by the ordinance, would be to discourage investment in housing, leading to a deterioration of property values in the town. Another member, who is an attorney with extensive experience in real estate litigation, noted that the commission could create an undue burden for landlords and lead to a rent-control-type environment. Another member, whose family has held rental property for over 100 years, expressed dismay at the implications for small landlords. Another member expressed concern that the commission could potentially seek to set profit margins and rental rates, leading to market distortions. It was also generally felt that the commissioner should be a high bar for action by the commission, and it should be aimed primarily at intervening in extreme cases, where either tenants or landlords are in real distress. So what we decided, what the committee wanted to do was to refer the item to a subcommittee comprised of two members from each of the three committees that had considered that. I submitted a draft of the ordinance to the moderator and Assistant Town Clerk, but I felt that it was, as passed, just to appoint them that way, was a little unspecific. So I have added a couple of things to the motion, and I will make it as an individual when appropriate.
Okay. You can do that now. So we're gonna take up the Burgweger motion to refer. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Resolved that item 27, we referred back to the three committees that originally considered it, the Health and Human Services Committee, the Land Use Committee, and the Legislative and Rules Committee, in order for these committees to form a subcommittee comprised of two members from each committee, to review the ordinance establishing a fair rent commission, and to report back to the RTM at its December 2023 regular meeting.
Thank you. That motion being offered on behalf of an individual does require a second. Is there a second? Okay. It's been moved and seconded and is now before us. No one has signed up to speak on this item. So we can try and adopt it by unanimous consent, or we can take a record vote, depending if anyone objects. And we'll wait a few seconds to see if anyone online has an objection. But the Burgweger motion is to refer this item back to a subcommittee comprised of two members each from the three standing committees that considered it, to Health and Human Services, Land Use, and Legislative and Rules, to do their work and report back at the December meeting. Is anyone opposed to that referral? Okay. That, so that is not by unanimous consent, so we will take a record vote. If the district chairs or secretaries, whoever's tabulating, could pass around the card, and it would be Burgweger motion to refer item 26 to a special subcommittee. And those online, if you could text your vote in, that would be great. And we will wait five minutes?
Item 27.
I'm sorry, what?
Item 27.
What did I say?
26.
Oh, God, it's late. Item 27, I'm sorry. So scratch that. Item 27, Burgweger motion to refer to a special, to a subcommittee, a subcommittee, actually. Okay? Okay. If you could circulate your cards and get your texts in, we'll give you five minutes, and then we'll let you know the outcome of that. If that motion is referred, that will be it for the evening. Okay, we do have the vote on item 27, the Burgweger motion to refer the item to a subcommittee. Those in favor, 149. Opposed, 14. Abstaining, 3. That item has carried. There being no further business to come before the body, this motion, this meeting stands adjourned. And I do thank you all for your patience. Thank you. And we'll see you in October.